I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And I'm gonna read the state of the public meetings act. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the act, the Hopeful Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopeful Valley News and the Times on January 5th, 2022. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purpose of Board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube, Bulldog TV, and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Would you please join me in the flag salute? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as. Okay. I like to give a little history over why I am sitting here conducting this meeting and not one of our elected Board officials. This is the one meeting of the year where the Board Secretary is actually in control of the meeting.
Congratulations.
So, my first duty is to announce the election results of November 8th, 2022, at which we had three, or two, three-year terms for Hopeful Township and one three-year term for Hopewell Borough. Mike Wilson was elected to Hopewell Township with 4,826 votes. And Ulu, I'm saying it correctly, I hope, and she'll be going by Lydia here, got also was a writing candidate and got 443 votes, and she was also elected to a three-year term. Mark Peters was elected to a three-year term in Hopewell Borough with 667 votes. So we welcome those three members to our Board. It was a pretty decent turnout in Hopewell Borough. We had 58% of the people voting in the borough, and in Hopewell Township, there were 42% of the people voting. So what I'm going to do now, and I just heard the door open and close, I'm wondering if Mike entered the room? Maybe not. All right, I guess we're ready. So I'm gonna ask Mike, Mark, and Lydia to join me at the podium to take the oath of office. On this part here, you don't have to say this. You don't want to, you don't want to say this.
Got it.
If you don't want to, and when I say state your name, don't say state. Oh, he's like. So I state your name.
Mark Peters.
Oh, you.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You can say it together.
Okay, okay. I thought you did one at a time, okay.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and this state.
In the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I state your name.
Mark Peters.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Hopeful Valley Regional Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Hopeful Valley Regional Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter.
And not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
And not disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
There you go. And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties.
And justly perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, welcome to the Hopeful Valley Regional Board of Education.
Thank you.
I just need to get your signatures.
I'm so glad you.
I always look to our board attorney who's making sure we do this correctly, because it has to be, the signature actually has to be witnessed.
There you go, good.
All right, you guys take your seats. It's the hard part, all those RSs and NJSA's, I don't know why they put that in there, Paul, but. All right. So, now that we have a seated board with our two new members, we can now officially take a roll call and open the meeting. So Ms. Driver. Ms. Lou. Mr. Peters.
Here.
Mr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Sewicki.
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Here.
We do have a quorum present. So again, welcome to our new board members. Hopefully you have your instructions on how to get access to your district email, which we will be using now, and access to Board docs, which you can access tonight at the meeting if you want, but that should get you in. We can help you through the Google email, and we can help you through Board docs whenever you, if you have any questions with that, just give a call.
Sorry, I should have kept the copy of this certificate.
What's that? I will, yeah, I'll give that back to you. Yeah. Yep. Okay, my last official duty tonight is to preside over your election of president. Okay? I will call for nominations for the office of Board President. There is no second necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote of each member asking you to state your selection for Board President. If there is only one nomination, I will conduct a voice vote of yays, nays, or abstentions. Once a president has been selected, I will step down, regrettably, temporary chair of this meeting, and pass the gavel to our newly-elected president, who will then do the same thing for the election of the vice president. Okay, the floor is now open for nominations for President of the Board of Education for 2023, 24, no, 2000.
Yeah.
Yeah, 20, no, 23, doesn't carry on, 2023. So the nominations are open. Okay. Are there any other nominations for President of the Board of Education? Seeing none, I will close the nominations for President, and I will now ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of Anita Williams for President of the Board of Education, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Congratulations, Anita, come and take your gavel. Okay, if they want, she goes, I just wanna take a picture. Mark, if you have anybody here you want to take a picture with?
All my kids are sleeping right now, but, yeah, thanks anyway. I know. Yeah. Not that two-and-a-half-year-old who's body training right now, we're not bringing her here, I promise you that.
She would have gotten the kick out of that also vote.
Yeah. She's done for six counts, so, we'll go with the seventh if we get it.
I have a procedural question, I don't know whether I should ask it.
She can ask it.
With eight members, what's the quorum?
Quorum is still five.
The quorum is still five, okay.
Yeah, you can't have, you have, you gotta have five.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all for the honor. So, as procedure, we are now electing a vice president. The Board President, oh, sorry, I will call for nominations. Clearly, I'm reading a script. I will call for nominations for the office of Board Vice President. No second is necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote of each member asking you to state your selection for Board Vice President. If there is only one nomination, I'll conduct a voice vote of yays, nays, or abstentions. This will conclude the election of officers for the 2023 calendar year. The floor is open for nominations. I would like to nominate Andrea Driver. Andrea. Oh, you're her son. Any other nominations? Okay. So we close the nominations, and as there is only one nominee, the, all those in favors of, yeah, of Andrea Driver.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstaining? Okay, congratulations. Okay, I will just, this is where I would, in the future, I guess, have a report, I have none. But again, I would just want to thank you for the honor of this opportunity, and also just to let you know, for those of you I've worked with before, how important it is to me to do the work that we do on this board, and I, you, you know, have your back, we have a team that we're working to develop, and we're here for the community, so thank you again. Next up, we're going to, I believe, have our ethics, our annual ethics review, so Paul, our board attorney, thank you.
Bob, are you gonna do the slides for me?
Yeah, I will do them for you. And just by way of introduction, this is Mr. Paul Green, he is our board attorney, he handles a variety of issues, general legal issues, and also is our head negotiator for contract negotiations with various unions in the district. So I will turn it over to Paul.
Thank you.
If he wants to give a more of a resume, you're welcome to.
It's okay, I don't wanna waste everybody's time tonight, I think everybody wants to get out as soon as we can tonight. So, thank you all, and congratulations to the new board members, to the president and vice president. So we're gonna talk about Ethics for School Officials very briefly, but to try to give you some background on it, especially for the new board members, for some of the returning board members, this should look familiar, it's a similar outline to last year. Okay, next slide, please. So, in our representative form of government, it's essential that the conduct of members of the Boards of Education hold the respect and confidence of the people. So the idea is we must avoid conduct and violation of the public trust. Next slide. So to whom does the School Ethics Act apply? It applies to board members, managerial employees, officers of the, and JSBA, the School Boards Association, and school administrators. The Code of Ethics in the act itself only applies to board members, so there's two pieces to the School Ethics Act. One is the statute that talks about everybody, and the other one is the Code of Ethics that governs your conduct as board members. So why are we doing this? Because, among other things, the regulation says we must. Each board must annually discuss the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics at a regularly-scheduled public meeting, which we are doing tonight. Next. So the School Ethics Act, Section 1 has prohibited acts that address conflicts of interest, your policy 0142 basically incorporates that. Next is Section 2, which is the Code of Ethics. Excellent. So Section 1, there's a variety of prohibitions that prohibit basically an interest in a business organization or any other activity that would be in substantial conflict with the discharge of your duties, using one's position to secure unwarranted privileges or employment for oneself or members of the family, or acting in any capacity where you or a member of your immediate family or a business organization in which you have an interest might reasonably be expected to impair your objectivity or independence of judgment.
And as part of this, one of the things you'll be given very shortly is a disclosure statement where you have to complete that we sent to the state, saying that you don't have an interest in any business organization that we do business with.
Right. Thank you. So you can't have any interest in, as Bob just mentioned, any person, party, other than the Board or District in connection with any matter. The only exception to that is you can represent your own child. You have a right as a parent to basically act on behalf of your child in any kind of school proceedings, especially in a disciplinary proceeding, but generally, other than that, you may not have any interest of representing any person before the Board. Next. So now the Code of Ethics provisions. The key one, the first one, you will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, color, sex, or social standing. That is the essence of one's obligation as a board member. Next. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning. The Board is a policymaking body. Where people often get into trouble is they actually try to start administering or micromanaging the schools. You will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them. So again, the role of the Board is to make policy and to oversee the district. There's always that question of where that, that line is between ensuring that the district is well-run and actually trying to run the district. We'll see a little later, sometimes that can become a problem. Next slide. Section D says, "I will carry in my responsibility not to administer the schools," very important, "but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run." Next slide. In order to prove a violation of that provision, there actually has to be showing that the board member gave a direct order to school personnel or became directly involved in activities that are the responsibility of school personnel or the day-to-day administration of the school district. Next. So for example, a board member asked for copies of SAT reports directly from the guidance secretary, went and inspected lockers in the boys' locker room, instructed staff on the supervision of students, all of which clearly transcend one's role as a board member and actually get into the administration of the school. Section E, "I will recognize authority rests with the Board of Education." The only power you have as a board member is when you're sitting at this table at a meeting, or if you're acting in a committee on behalf of the Board. But basically, the power and the authority rests with the Board, you are an individual member and part of that, but the Board is the actual entity. And I will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. And we'll see in a little bit what some of that is. In order to prove a violation of that includes evidence that you made, one made personal promises or took action beyond the scope of your duties, which had the potential to compromise the Board. Section F, "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends." Very important that you have independent judgment and are not being essentially guided by or influenced, overly influenced by outside partisan political groups or other outside groups. Section G, confidentiality. This is an area where people often get into trouble. "I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information." So two pieces here. One, whatever is said in executive session stays in executive session, you do not reveal it. I will, we'll see a little later where people also got in trouble by even inadvertently replying "all" to an email without realizing that people outside of the Board were on that chain. My recommendation is never reply "all," ever, because you may not know where that's going. So anything that's discussed in closed session stays in closed session. The other part is that part that "I will provide accurate information." Very important that if you do provide any information that's not confidential, that whatever you put out there has to be accurate and not misleading or not incorrect. Next slide. Section I, "I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties." Very important that you support your administration and your staff. To prove that, evidence is used that the respondent took deliberate action, respondent meaning the board member charged with the alleged violation, which resulted in undermining, opposing, compromising, or harming school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. Next. Very important, if you get complaints, and you will get complaints, people will come to you with, with issues. They have to be referred to the Chief Administrative Officer, in other words, Dr. Therese, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. What that means is that they go to the superintendent, and the superintendent will deal with them. And in the rare occurrence when something is not dealt with at the administrative level, which is, should be frankly, almost never, only then can they actually be discussed at a public meeting. Next. So the, the code does not explain how the complaint is to be referred to the chief school administrator, there's two schools of thought on it. One is that the board member may make the referral directly to the CSA, or the board member may direct the constituent to go directly to the CSA. That's kind of a judgment call that you make, given the circumstances that are involved. Usually you're safer, well, let's put it this way, I, I think you're safer notifying the CSA because you've received the complaint, and the member of the public may choose not to bring that to the superintendent's attention, but the fact is you did get the complaint, and now you at least want to be in a situation where you've passed it on, so that there can't be any issue coming back at you later. Next. So who can file a complaint with the SEC? School Ethics Commission. Any person may file a complaint alleging a violation of the Act or the Code. Six-month statute of limitations, so after six months, nothing can be acted upon, it's gone. Now the School Ethics Commission, that's an entity within the Department of Education, it's the only entity that can determine whether a school official's conduct violated the Act. Board of Education has no control or power over its members, other than if a member misses three consecutive meetings, the member can be required to show cause why he or she should not be removed. That is the only power a Board has over its membership. Everything else goes to the School Ethics Commission. Anyone can request an advisory opinion about their own or somebody else's proposed course of conduct, so if there is a question that a board member has about whether something may be of conflict of interest, we recommend that it's always wise to get an advisory opinion from the SEC. Those are not binding, they're advisory, but they're pretty persuasive in terms of how the SEC would vote if this matter actually came before them on a complaint. So any school official may request an advisory, as I just mentioned, about your own conduct. If it relates to the conduct of another school official, you have to copy that official, and that official may file a response. Sanctions for violation of the Act, reprimand, censure, suspension, or removal. And I'm often asked, what are the differences between reprimand, censure, and suspension is obvious, they can suspend you or they can remove, which is very rare. So the reprimand and censure, it's really more a matter of degree, they're both the same, essentially slap on the wrist, to put it, you know, in one fashion. One is stronger, censure is a stronger condemnation, but they're both, you know, reprimand has a lighter overtone to it, that it's not as serious, but at the end of the day, they're both public, you know, reprimands or, you know, criticisms of the board member's conduct. Next. There are free speech issues, you do have First Amendment rights to express yourselves. According to the Ethics Code, you have to be very careful how you do that. Again, any information you disclose must be accurate, you may not disclose confidential information or information which has the potential to compromise the Board. Next. Should not publicly criticize your staff. Should not publicly criticize your staff. That is something that should really be refrained from. You may not represent your personal opinion as the position of the board. And in all formal expressions in which the board affiliation is likely to be recognized, which is like everything, such as letters to government officials or newspapers, speeches to organizations, statements on Facebook, and the like, you have to include a disclaimer that says that you are speaking as a private citizen, and those opinions do not necessarily represent those of the Board of Education. Sample disclaimer, the following statements are made in my capacity as a private citizen, not in my capacity as a board member. And if anybody ever needs a copy of anything like this, you can contact Bob, and he can get it for you.
Yeah, this presentation is actually on Board Docs, so if you want to reference it at any time.
Yeah. Good. And you also have to include that second sentence there. "These statements are not representative of the board or its individual members and solely represent my own personal opinion." Need both pieces. Very important, as we'll see in a second. Here, we'll see here. So here's a situation, a case where a board member wrote an op-ed endorsing candidates, created the appearance that the board endorsed certain candidates and opposed others. The problem was, although he said he was writing on his own behalf, the disclaimer was insufficient because he failed to state that he was not speaking on behalf of the board. The ALJ recommended a reprimand, the Ethics Commission imposed a penalty of censure, and the commissioner did reduce it back to a reprimand, since he said the respondent at least attempted to represent his views as his own, but it was insufficient. He not only said, he said only that his views were his own, but he gave the impression by using terms "we" and "our" that he was not speaking on behalf of the board. That he, I mean, rather, he gave impression he was, he could have been speaking on behalf of the board. So, you know, very important that you have both pieces in any kind of a disclaimer.
Again, while a reprimand and/or a censure may be a slap on the wrist, it doesn't look favorably on the board as a whole if things like that are happening within the board.
No, it's very true. It's not, and it's not a situation either you or the board wants to find itself. Flarus versus Jeong, this is a situation where this is why you don't reply to "all." Or actually, in this case, it's even worse. A board member received a message from a parent regarding an alleged incident, did not name the student, but there were other identifiers. The board member forwarded the message via social media to the family members, only to family members. But of course, a family member forwarded the messages to others. It got out into the internet, and eventually it made its way to one of the students involved in the incident, and they obviously could tell who it was. Next slide. So there, it was found that they violated the confidentiality provision. He forwarded the message, enabled details of the incident and the resulting discipline to be disclosed accountless to others. Fact that the board member used his personal email account was really not relevant, it's the fact that this disclosure was made, and the penalty here was a censure because of the nature of the violation. Okay, time for the quiz. We're not going to actually ask people to answer these, we'll just think, just think to yourself what you think they might answer B. So number one, "Board members violated Section A of the Code of Ethics when they voted to reject the 2223-K at Health and Physical Education Curriculum." This is, of course, the sex education curriculum of student life and family life, thereby leaving the district in noncompliance with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. That's false. So in this case, the, it was a very technical decision, because what the commission said is to prove a violation of Section A, which is "I will uphold the laws," you actually need to have a decision from, usually from the Commissioner of Education, but it could be from the Superior Court, finding that there was actually a failure to uphold the laws and a violation of the laws. What they said here was, since that didn't occur, they were finding that there was no ethics violation. They said, "But if during the period of the statute of limitations," which is pretty much run by the time this decision came out, "during that six-month period, if there was a finding, then you could bring that to their attention, and they would then rule on whether or not it was an ethics violation." The board members in question, who were listening to parents who were objecting to the curriculum, said, "Look, we didn't challenge or criticize the student learning standards. All we said was, we think that the administration needs to go back and look at this curriculum more carefully in light of the concerns that the parents are raising." So there was that aspect to it as well. But it's an interesting case, because it's one of the cases that has recently come out, dealing with a lot of the turmoil that we were going through as this curriculum was being adopted. True or false, "A board member violated Section I of the Code when he attributed alleged poor reading results on teachers in lower grades by stating, 'I know the conversation started with the high school ranking. If we're not doing what we need to do, we're going to continue to get the results. Are the students that have been in uni, are these students that have been in unions since kindergarten?" Last sentence is critical. "That would indicate to me that there's something wrong with our teaching staff." That's false. It's not a violation, because what the commission's found here was that the board member did not identify specific staff members, did not specifically criticize staff members, just kind of made a general statement that, you know, maybe there's a problem with this teaching staff, but did not go any further than that. So they found that that in itself was insufficient to be an ethics violation. Next one. "Board member violated Sections I and G when she shared a post on her personal Facebook page that casted the complainant, who was a substitute teacher employed by the board, in a negative light, alleged the substitute was removed from her position as a result of unspecified misconduct." Should add here that that allegation was false. It was not a correct allegation. This wasn't an ethics violation. Basically, here, clearly, the board member is putting something out in the public. A was inaccurate, but just as importantly, B was actually directly criticizing an employee of the district and found to basically be unacceptable conduct. "Board member violated Sections E of the Code when, during an executive session, a heated discussion ensued among board members." Hopefully, that will never happen here. And at some point during the discussion, the respondent board member turned to the complainant and stated, "Do you want to get punched tonight?" These are two women. When the complainant asked respondent if she was threatening her, and respondent repeated, "Do you want to get punched tonight?" That was not an ethics violation. They said it was, they did distinguish it.
Was it criminal violation?
No, it was not an assault, it was just, "Do you want to get punched tonight?" They said, "Look, she didn't accost her." They distinguished it. There's another case that involved, had come down a couple of years earlier, that involved two board members, who actually, one guy got in the other board member's face, and, you know, was very threatening and had to be restrained by some of the other board members. They said, "This isn't that case," you know, where, you know, you put somebody in fear of their safety, who was just the statement, "Do you want to get punched tonight?" So they said, "No, that's not an ethics violation." But they, not that they said, I mean, they said, "Obviously, it's not appropriate conduct," but they said, "We have no jurisdiction over that."
Now, here's the dumb question. How did this come to light, given that it's closed session and you're not supposed to be talking about it?
Well, you can talk about that, because that wasn't board business that they were talking about. That was, you know, they weren't talking about board business, they were talking about the conduct of the board member while, you know, right, well, right. So there was no, there was no, you know, release of any confidential information. What, you know, when I say what happens in closed session stays in closed session, I mean what you're talking about is board business, not necessarily the conduct of the board members. That's a good question. Okay. "A board member violated Sections B and E when, at a board member meeting, he asked the public to be mindful of the proper decorum." I love this case. "While residents used profanity during public comment, used the F-bomb." The board member then stated, posted on Facebook, "Speaking as a private citizen, it felt like we were transported to Appalachia last night, and the local dive bar closed early, so the patrons came to the board meeting. Everyone should have to wash their hair and jeans before they come up screaming and dropping the F-bomb. It was unsightly nauseating." Although they obviously did not condone the statement, the School Ethics Commission said, "There was no violation of the Act itself." That this is certainly, you know, not well-chosen words, but, you know, but there's no direct action, there's no compromise of the board. It was just basically, just a poor choice of words. So I recommend that you not use that kind of language, but, but it was, yeah, that's "Board president posted a blog which included comments about a teacher in the district and implied she received a job due to her brother's political activities." And this is low-dy, which frankly, is, you know, not a surprise that somebody would make that allegation. And that she was unqualified for her position. They just, they just have this famous reputation for them. "Alleged the complainant did not want to resolve contract negotiations, posted pictures of the street where she lived, referred to complainant as a greedy bastard, and implied she was a bully." Yeah, well, that's a problem. You cannot go and start, like, saying those things about staff members, obviously. That's just way, wherever the line is, that's way past it. "Board member violated Sections E of the Code when he replied to the parent from his official board email about the information the parent had sent to the board member. Specifically, the parent expressed concerns about teachers' social media." This was, a teacher had come up and spoken at the board. This was during the debate about whether schools should resume during the pandemic. And somebody had put on Facebook a shot of this teacher in Cancun having beers and saying, you know, "She's hypocritical, and she's, you know, here she is, you know, with people in a bar, and she doesn't want, you know, people to be in the school." The same teacher had spoken at a board meeting about how the school staff returning ten person instruction was not safe. The board member replied to the parent and stated he was appalled by the teacher's behavior, and the parent could expect a proportionate response from the administration. That was a violation that, there were a couple of things. One is that, in the course of that, the, essentially, a board member had revealed some confidential information that indicated that the board, you know, had certain access to information, and also gave the impression that the superintendent was going to essentially take this board member's side and deal with the staff member. So it was held that the board member had no business communicating with the staff member about that, that that should not have occurred. Next. "Board member would violate the Code of Ethics." Again, this goes back to when we talked about administering the schools by actively participating in initial and/or exit interviews for staff members. That is true. That there are opinions from the Ethics Commission that say that if you, as a board member, actively participate in exit, in initial interviews, that you are in fact acting as an administrator. The administration can bring that information back to you and share it with you, but you may not, as a board member, participate in that process.
Paul, I have a question on the previous one, on number seven.
Yeah.
Not that I would ever do it, but had the board member replied to the parent and said, "Personally, not speaking for the board, but personally, I'm appalled by the teacher's behavior," and stop there.
That would probably, yeah, that would, well, that might be a closer question. That might be a closer question.
Because the second part is clearly a violation.
Yeah, right, exactly. That might be, I would, like you said, don't do it, you know, but it's quite possible that that might have skated by, because the person said, "Speaking as a private citizen, not as a board member, you know, not on behalf of the board, I'm appalled by this." They probably would have let that go. Good question.
And just a quick clarification, if you're using, there's some extra weight when you use your board email.
Yes, yeah. I mean, keeping in mind that, you know, if you commit a violation, it won't matter, but using your board email address has that imprimatur of coming from the district. Right, good point, too. Okay, just, yes, right, we're at the next one. So, don't do this. If you get pulled over, don't tell a board, the police officer you're a board member. Don't use profanity, and don't threaten to call the mayor, saying, "I'm a friend of the township administrator," which in South Orange Maplewood is where this is.
On my way, and you tested this, you're still going to pick it.
So, not a good idea. Right. In fact, that might give you a more severe penalty. Okay. "It's a violation of the Act for board member to also serve as executive officer of the PTA or any other PTA position." It is false, it is not a violation. You can be both a board member and the executive officer of the PTA. Obviously, you have to be careful not to share any information that you have as a board member that would compromise the board, but otherwise, you are certainly free to serve in the volunteer capacity as well. "Board member violated Sections G by inadvertently replying "all" to an email that included not only the board, but the parent who brought the complaint." That is true. Again, don't reply to "all." The key to that was that there was confidential information revealed about the board member's disagreement with the discussion that had occurred in closed session about the issue, and there was some revelation of some of what occurred in the closed session. So even though it was inadvertent and wasn't intentional, it was still a violation, because the fact is that the board member had included the parent in the email chain.
Again, as we've indicated before, what we try to do as administrators when we're emailing multiple board members or the whole board is we blind copy everybody but the board president.
Right.
So that you can't physically reply "all."
Wise idea. "Board member violated Sections E and I of the Code by asking the director of curriculum whether she was interested in the superintendent's or boss's job." Yeah, that's a violation. The superintendent wasn't going anywhere, the superintendent had several years left on her contract, so why are you asking the director of curriculum whether you want the superintendent's job? See, you can't make this stuff up. Now, a board member violated, wow, this was a good, B, C, D, E, J, there's almost nothing included on this one, right? "When she advised the superintendent that she should remove the renewal of a non-tenure teaching staff member from the agenda," this is the board president who's saying this to the superintendent, "because the superintendent's recommendation would not be supported by a majority of the board." It's an interesting question, that's one's false, because the SEC said, "Look, you know, as a board, you can reject the superintendent's recommendation, you have that right. The statute says it cannot be for arbitrary or capricious reasons, but the board, in that circumstance, can vote the recommendation down." And they said, "There's nothing wrong with the board president saying to the superintendent, 'I don't think we've got the votes to get that through.'" That was not a violation. "Board member violated B and F of the Code when she wore a pride mask." This was a very raucous board meeting, where word had gotten out that a right-wing group was coming in to talk about the curriculum and books in the library and, you know, in the school. So it was the, you know, the ongoing concerns that are being raised throughout the country about references in textbooks and the curriculum to the LGBT community. There were over 300 people in attendance, predominantly representing the community. The board member wore a rainbow mask, and then later made a statement on Facebook that basically, you know, thanked the students who came out that night to support the group. That is false, there is absolutely nothing wrong with doing that. I mean, the allegation was that by doing that, the board member was singling out a particular group to the detriment of other groups and other students. The commission said that that's basically ridiculous. They in fact found this to be a frivolous complaint, and said that you have every right, and in fact, probably an obligation to support the LGBT community, and that an act of expression in support of that community cannot be an ethics violation in and of itself. Interestingly, on an ethics violation that's found to be frivolous, they can fine up to a whopping $500. For some reason, in this case, they only fined the complainant $100, I'm not sure why. But they did find that it was, in pretty strong language, that that was a frivolous case.
Was that paid by the board?
No, that's paid by the complainant. That's, the complainant is fined. Yeah, no, they found that this complaint should never have been filed, so the person who filed the complaint was hit with a $100 fine, which can be enforced. Board member, just a bonus question. A board member can review a staff member's file, A, only with approval of a majority of the board, B, without board input, C, upon notice to the board administration, D, if there is action pending before the board with respect to that employee. Correct answer is D. The only time you have access to a staff member's file is if you are being asked to do, take some specific action with respect to that employee. In that circumstance, you can't see it. Otherwise, it's not the board's business to do that, and you can't ask to see a specific file unless there's some action that's going before the board. Any questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. My pleasure. Thank you for your interest.
That's why, that's why Weaver.
So we, Paul, I do, you know, appreciate you coming every year, because I think the, not the trivia, but using the actual cases helps us kind of codify what the law really means.
Okay. Okay. This is the first public comment, and members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes. During this portion of the meeting, we are asked to state, you are asked to state your name. Add your name. This is the first public comment, and members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. We are asked to state, you are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at future meetings so that the matter is researched by the district administration. And we have time. Public comment is open. Okay, seeing there is none, public comment section is closed. Regarding the next item, consent agenda, those items are recognized on the agenda as, with an asterisk?
So I can give a little background with that. Essentially, what the board is doing now in January is restarting its year, and we'll do things, you've gone through, you've been given a copy of the Code of Ethics, we've had our ethics training, and we have to do some simple things that reestablishes the board. We are adopting our policies and bylaws, which is what we're governed are, and that's what your main job is, to modify and to monitor those policies. We're designating the newspapers and the media that we will use to give our public announcements to. We're required by law to announce all of our meetings within 48 hours so that the public can attend. We have our schedule of board meeting dates for 2023. They can be changed, but this is where we'd like to give you a heads-up and plan out your years, when the meetings will be happening. There may be other meetings that we'll need to set as we move through the year, but these are the basic business meetings that you'll see throughout the year. We're also establishing our structure as a board by committee. We have six standing board committees by policy. We also have, I believe, five advisory board committees and board liaison assignments. Your newly-elected president will confer with her vice president, superintendent, to establish committees for next year, and we'll move forward in that structure. That pretty much is what you're required to establish. We have a business reorganization meeting that works on a fiscal year that we'll do in June, and that reestablishes our professionals that we use, other things that aren't the governance of the board. This is essentially the reorganization of the governance portion of the board, and that's these items that are on the consent agenda for you tonight. If there's any questions on those items, I can, more than happy to answer them, or we can talk about it offline if you'd like.
Okay. For the consent agenda items, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.
So the next, I would say skip calendar for now.
Okay.
And what we're typically going to do now, what we would do now, is to establish our calendar for the next two months going out, other than the board meetings that are already on there, and we've already established those. But committee meetings will need to be set, and once they're set, the administrative liaison to that particular committee will contact the members of that committee to establish a agreeable time to meet. Part of the parts of, function of a board, and a board member could complain about this, is if we, say I had a finance committee, and it was, you know, Alex, Adam, and Mark, and I would set the meetings that were only convened to Adam and Alex and kept Mark out of the loop. So we try to make it comfortable for everybody. It changes from time to time. Sometimes it's in the morning, afternoon, sometimes it's in the evening, but we will establish those once and either, you know, that lets me know where the committees are going to stand.
Okay? And regarding that, I'll look to try to do that within the next 72 hours or so, so that we can give everybody time to look at their calendars and get stuff set. Okay. We are open to the public for our second section here. And members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comments are now open. Since there are none, comment section is closed.
Okay, now prior, I'll touch on this a little bit just for our new board members. As we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, a board will go into executive session, and there's got to be a specific purpose for it. Of the matters, we're going to be discussing a student matter tonight, and that is one of them that is excluded and allowed to be discussed in private without the public there. So when we go into executive session, we must vote to enter it, and we must give a reason, a reason enough that the public knows why we're going in. We can't just say we're going into public session for no reason, and we also must tell them whether we're going to vote on anything or make any decisions when we come out of public session. So. Executive session. So what I'm going to let your president know is that we will, we're going in for student matter, and we're not going to be taking any action upon exit. There'll be no action other than adjournment when we come out of that.
Motion for executive session.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining?
Okay. We're going to go into executive session. Thank you, members of the public, for attending.